Yeah, from a civil service.
Yeah.
So, but it's 4:15 and Harold said he was gonna be here, but if he comes, we will stop and we will take roll. But as has been said, Sandy is going to give us some information. Sandy is going to give us information about what she has found regarding the city taking over the animal control duty. So Sandy, go ahead please.
Okay. We have goals and objectives and what we are here for right now is to provide City Council with information as part of the decision-making process proposing an alternative of the city to move forward providing full-time animal control services to the city of Waterloo. We have a current contract with Black Hawk Animal Control and they provide services Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. That does expire June 30th. Right now, Black Hawk Animal Control has a bid proposal into us and I just received another email from them this afternoon at 3:30 for taking over animal control services Monday through Sunday, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. for $219,159 a year. That, as far as I can tell from the previous emails, does not include any DOAs, which mean that would be a negotiable charge and an additional charge on top of that.
Sandy, an DOA is anything from a squirrel to a deer?
Yes. Well, a deer is $65 a deer.
Right, but I mean, a DOA is anything that's good.
Right.
Okay.
A base bid for taking over all of animal control again with Night Call minus the DOAs is $227,429. So that is a negotiable contract cost if they took complete control of animal control again. However, it does not include DOA fees. The city of Waterloo in-house estimate, we have a projected cost of providing the complete service package for $207,616. This would include weekend services. It's our projected overall cost. It includes all services that we do at this time. On my sheet of estimated expenses, I have estimated a full-time officer, a part-time officer, an officer that's under an agreement right now, director, and a office clerk to take over some of the phone calls or duties. Also have an overtime budget, have a building budget. If this is approved, we are looking at the central garage to renovate. We have volunteers and also donated items such as chain link fence and other items to renovate that at no additional cost. We are in the process of upgrading our van to a newer model as soon as the new building maintenance van is ready to put on the road. We will inherit their older one. We'll renovate that in-house like we did the other one. Then we have equipment, cost, supplies, office supplies. We have veterinarians, emergency injuries, rescue foster agencies, DOA. At this time right now, we are taking deer to the landfill. We are looking at waste management and also working with the DNR to possibly be able to bury them on the city's land. And then, of course, there's unforeseen costs that arise without anyone knowing. As of basically today, we have picked up 89 DOA deer and our landfill costs have only been $174 so far.
Sandy, where are you picking up all these deer?
Pardon me?
Where are you picking up all these deer?
Whenever we get a call.
I mean, where are they coming from?
Where?
Yeah, are they in the outskirts of the city?
No.
Anywhere.
We picked them up in Cedar Bend today, Wagner Road, Airline.
Everywhere.
Had one on Hoth last week.
Port Road.
Yeah.
I mean, anywhere in the city right now.
Okay.
And mainly, a lot of it's because of the high water, deer coming out of places.
Oh, yeah.
Maria's answered 1,760 calls since last August and as of May 14th, our cost out of the animal control budget that the Humane Society and everyone's paid out of was $21,146. We have potential revenues. If Cedar Falls would decide to come onboard, they're paying the Humane Society $109,000 right now. They are very interested in coming onboard with us, but that would all be negotiable. I mean, that's a negotiation thing.
Let me stop for just a minute, Sandy, with the addition of Mr. Getty. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll please?
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Welfer?
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Motion to approve agenda is proposed.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Very good. We're in session. Thanks, Sandy. Go ahead and start again.
Okay, no, that's fine. If we would take over Cedar Falls, they don't average that many calls, so we see it as no additional labor. We will fit that in with our calls. One of our potential revenues is getting the court fines taken from the police department, which is what they go into now as a revenue, and bringing it back into animal control revenue. Donations, we have more donations in material things right now than we have money. However, we do have a restricted fund right now that has donations. We feel that if we have animal control back, we can go out and do fundraising and go to agencies for more donations. We have an extensive citizen volunteer availability. As of right now, we are housing at waste management and that is a secure area, so these volunteers cannot go in there unless Maria or I are in there with them to help us out. So if we are in another building, we have a number of people ready to come forward to help walk animals, clean kennels, answer phones, do whatever we need. We have a special service offering, which is microchipping. We would like to purchase microchips and run a special, so-called a special, like on a Saturday morning or something, to offer citizens a $25 fee to come in and have your animal microchipped. Also be able to have them purchase their license at that time. We would have them there, bring in available rabies, and if we could issue licenses, we can build that fund also. We have customer service projects. We do have some really good ideas for donations and to go out and campaign. We're just keeping them kind of behind closed doors right now, but we have some really, really good ideas. For our revenues, we're projected 2013 for dog license, cat license, pickup fees. However, if we take over, we're estimating those to be higher. We will pursue them. We will go back and do checkups on people. We also get a service charge now, which is $10 for each animal that spends a day or a night in our building. It's $10 a day. So if we have the animal for five days, it'd be a $50 fee. One plus for us is that when we do this right now, when people redeem their dogs, it's cash upfront, write checks. So we are assured of that pickup fee, that service charge, and we are back in four days checking on a license. If not, a citation's issued. I mean, these people have to understand that this is the ordinance. We only work with them for so long if they're not willing to cooperate. You know, we're out there to enforce the ordinance. The microchip campaign, we're hoping it could raise about $7,000 or over. If we can issue 300 of them or insert 300 of them, it's such a benefit to the owner itself and also to the city because we have a scanner that we can read the microchips now, so then we can return animals to their owners. Fundraising campaigns, we know we can raise $5,000. It's inevitable. We know we can. So our, I guess I have to look at our revenues would be, raising them would be like almost $40,000 without Cedar Falls. Also on the pickup fees, which we go after now, when Black Hawk Animal Control picks them up and people redeem their animals, we get copies of all their redemptions. And if people don't pay, we send letters out as a reminder. And that's really the only option we have because the credit bureau does not want them anymore because they're only $15. And they really aren't interested in going after people and getting $7.50. So we lose that money. We go after the people with one or two letters. You know, we have no way of collecting it right now. But if we have it, they pay upfront, so that money is ours. In order for them to get their animal back, they pay. We would also like to raise our pickup fees to $25. They're 15 now, but we feel with the service we would be giving. And we do take animals back home if we get them on the street instead of bringing them down to our building if we know who the owner is. We collect the money right then too, but it would be a service to them and us if we raised it for $10. Right now, Black Hawk Animal Control Services include bite cases and quarantine enforcements, pickup of confined domestic animals, potentially dangerous dog calls, neglected abused or abandoned animals, sick or injured domestic animals, redemptions, owner-allows calls, which means they know who the owner is and it allows their dog to run loose. They'll go and give them a written warning. They rent live cat traps, lost and found services, and euthanize. They do not do the barking dog complaints, unsanitary conditions, too many animals, dogs at large, cats at large, pickup of DOAs, and wildlife calls. I just received the email from them this afternoon saying that they are not interested in continuing with the services that we both provide right now. I'm not sure if that could be negotiated or not. That's something I need to talk to them about. If not, they are interested in taking over animal control again. Those costs are all down here. I kind of went through that at the beginning. So an estimated cost for them to take over animal control would be $227,429 plus DOA fees, which at this time, we have picked up, I have that at the end, 452 DOAs. So I'm not sure if, previously, they said $10 an animal for dead animals, but they also would, well, I guess they're not interested in that anymore. Maria is now certified to euthanize, so we would no longer need their services for severely injured animals or temperament animals with a temperament. We could euthanize now. We're kind of just waiting. We haven't bought any of the medications or anything yet until we know how the council is going to vote on this. But we have everything set up from a vet that we can purchase this. I also have a list of the calls that the Humane Society or Black Hawk Animal Control has done in 2011, '12, and up to date this year. And those are from their logs I receive every month along with their invoice. As of August, the cities provide services from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 in the morning and on weekends, which included, or which does include, the barking dogs, unsanitary conditions, too many animals, dogs at large, cats at large, pickup of confined domestic animals, pickup of all dead animals, we answer neglected abuse and abandoned animals, sleep requests, potentially dangerous dog calls, aggressive domestic animal calls, sick or injured domestic animals. We pick up only injured or sick wildlife as we do have a good rapport with Yes, wildlife rehab. We do redemptions. We do, on certain cases, do bite cases and quarantine, especially on the weekends if it's something severe. We do have to handle that at the time, especially if the police are involved. We also answer owner-allows calls. We do lost and found and we also will be euthanizing.
What do you mean owner-allows calls?
That means if we know who the owner is and they allow their dog to run loose. And Black Hawk Animal Control does that during the day too, that they will go either talk to the owner or issue a written warning to them. As of, between August 16th and June 1st, Maria's answered 1,760 calls, which averages out to about 185 a month. She's picked up 452 DOAs, issued 144 written warnings, and 173 citations, with 21 pending at this time. And then, the other sheet is the email that I received from the Humane Society today. But we do have to be aware that something has to be signed or decided upon by June 30th because their services will cease. I mean, ours won't, but theirs will.
Thanks, Sandy. Let's start with any questions from council for what you have presented to this point. Anybody? David?
So, the Humane Society now, they have adoption services.
Yes.
What will the city do for that?
Well, right now, most of our animals go to rescue or foster.
And we wouldn't offer adoption services?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so that's one service the Humane Society provides that we wouldn't, right?
Right. Not that we couldn't consider that in the future, but at this time, no. And they will continue on. I mean, the Humane Society would continue with that anyway, so.
Harold?
Harold?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, as I told you the other day, I'm a little disturbed with the fact that only 2 out of 10 people license their animals. And I'm taking it upon myself to do some research on this, visiting with veterinarians and with the state. I haven't made phone calls to the state. I just got the phone numbers this afternoon. There is another, I don't know if you call it a disease, that dogs should be vaccinated for and we do not require it. Any dog lovers might know, a disease that comes from the ground that dogs get. If you said the name, I might...
Pardon?
Harville.
Yeah, okay, that, we do not...
That's a mandatory vaccination at a vet. I mean, you don't take a dog to the vet for their, there are certain things that you do all, you know, just like a human would get vaccinations.
The vet said it was, it's not mandatory. That's why I'm questioning if this is...
Responsible vets vaccinate because they don't want it breaking out in their kennels.
But if the dog owner doesn't want it, how can the vet do it? I mean, I don't, here again, I think that, again, I'm looking into all the different things that we probably should be doing and why. Are we vaccinating the dogs for the dog's sake? Are we doing it for the protection of the people? Are we doing it for a revenue source? Or is the answer yes to all three of those? I just think we need to really look at what we're doing. It has nothing to do with our contract here. This is something I'm doing on the side.
I guess I was surprised wrong when we had that conversation the other day. I have always thought that the primary reason for licensing animals, dogs and cats, is to be able to identify them should they get loose. That, you know, if we pick up an animal and that animal is licensed, we know immediately who it belongs to. Obviously, I've always, I thought that was the primary reason, having vaccinations is certainly a benefit, but being able to identify them is, but anyway.
The only thing I would say to that, then, why do we charge people every year to identify their animal unless they've moved or whatever? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
Why are you charged to license your car? I don't know. It's...
It's probably a revenue source, but if we're only licensing animals so we know who they belong to, once it's licensed, unless you move, why would you have to be again?
I don't know.
Anyway, these are just, you know, we're brainstorming here.
Well, I guess the question before you guys is, and we have to make it next Monday. That will be our last council meeting. Do we make a change and do we assume animal control in its entirety, or do we let the Black Hawk County Humane Society assume it in its entirety? Black Hawk County, the animal control shelter is, in this latest email that you have a copy of, they are not interested in continuing in the current form with them during the day and us doing it at night. So our options are one or the other. The city does it or Black Hawk County Animal Control does it. It appears to me, Sandy, and correct me if I'm wrong, or anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that while I think we could probably have excruciatingly long discussions on who's going to provide the best service and who's the most caring and who takes the best care of the animals, et cetera, one thing that doesn't appear to be in dispute is that animal control wants $227,429 for their contract minus DOA. You have figured a cost of $207,000 and change to include DOAs. So am I right on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Carolyn, please do.
Sandy, I'm on the estimated expenses page and I'm looking at the wages. Now, how many of the, are these all new people?
No.
Okay. How many positions?
It'd be a full-time officer. Basically, we have a, basically, almost a part-time temporary officer right now that fills in. And they would be under 19 hours a week, so there would be no benefits.
So which one of those numbers, excuse me, Carolyn, does Maria fit under the full-time officer, part-time officer, officer under agreement, director, office clerk? Which one of those is Maria?
She's under the agreement.
Under the agreement, okay.
So that would be two positions, the full-time officer and the part-time.
Yes.
Right.
The other component to this, as your risk manager, would be that we will have an increased risk. Maybe the insurance factor isn't being considered in here as far as what risk we're taking as far as workers' comp or the liability and the...
Okay. Good point.
So there's two risk factors there too that are hard to quantify.
And the full-time officer, that would be full-time with benefits, yes. And the part-time person would be not benefit, so would we prorate like we know?
Uh-uh. It'd be under 19 hours a week.
Okay.
So no benefits.
Thank you.
Anything else, David?
Some of the expenses seem to be perhaps a little conservative. So when you're looking at the difference between what Black Hawk can do and what we can do, there's only like about a 10% difference. So, right? I think that was about right. So I'd be worried that, you know, if things went south with any of these costs, that we really wouldn't save money. You know, it's more of a question of, do we want to control animal control? And also, was the county interested at all in organizing this?
Not at this time.
Because didn't they express some interest previously?
Couple years ago.
I think I saw that they've signed a contract. I understand the struggles that we've had with our current provider, so we would be interested in really exploring this opportunity.
Boy, we gotta explore quickly.
I know we do. I know we do.
Well, we've been talking about this for, you know, for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
And we are now...
Two years as far as...
To have to kind of, we have to make an, animal control has been gracious enough to extend contracts for us, which we have greatly appreciated. But we are beyond extending another contract.
Right.
So we are at the...
It's time to make a decision.
Time to make a decision. And I would encourage all of you with questions to ask them between now and next Monday. We will have it on the agenda next Monday, and it will be my recommendation that the city takes over animal control. So that's the way that it will be on the agenda, is that we assume the responsibilities of animal control program. And if council chooses not to, then you will defeat it. And we will then have to offer a motion to accept the animal control contract and move forward.
Another concern is we're putting an awful lot on Maria, who has certain skills. But will we have a backup for Maria? Will she have time to invest as this grows, especially as we take on, if we take on, you know, another city? And that's a lot, because she already has a lot of responsibilities, but obviously a great care for the animals as well.
Yes, we work really well together.
Actually, Maria should have less responsibility under this new contract than she does today. Right now, she is it with Sandy. And with the new proposal, there will be a full-time person that's dedicated to that.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Closed. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, what is today? Monday, June 17th, regularly scheduled meeting in the Waterloo City Council. Welcome to those that are in the audience tonight and also those that are on, that might be watching us on our public access television. Madam Clerk, could you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good. If each of you could join me, please, in standing for a moment of silent reflection or prayer, with one exception there, would be great, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Ethel Washington, our Housing Authority Director. Ethel, are you up for it?
I'm up.
Aye.
Please join me in the signing of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also with the approval of the agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of June 10.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, place, and file and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B7. Also, within the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $2,846,865.53, 2,846,865.53.
Second.
Excuse me, a question?
Yes, Mr. Getty.
Between up to B7, I don't have a seven on my agenda.
Oh, you have the draft. I see a draft.
Oh, I'm sorry.
These were laid out, though.
Bonds.
That's what, they were left there from Thursday.
Oops.
B7 is nothing, Harold, don't worry about it. It's just bonds, and Charlotte doesn't get excited about them or anything. All right. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? It's a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Very good. We do have one appointment of a new administrative secretary position on item B1. Linnea, am I saying that right?
Linnea.
Linnea Martinez to the position of administrative secretary. She'll start with us June 27th. I don't think Linnea is with us tonight, but certainly welcome her, all of you, as she starts. She's going to be taking Maria's position, and I'm sure will do a fine job. So welcome to Linnea as a new employee of the city of Waterloo. Let's do our resolutions, please, three at a time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a recommendation of award of contract to Seer Valley Corporation LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $592,527.40 for the rehabilitation of taxiway B at the Waterloo Regional Airport. Item number three is adopting a resolution accepting and approving grant agreement with Iowa Department of Transportation for Urban State Traffic Engineering Program, U-Step project funds in the amount of $25,000 to be used for traffic safety improvements at the intersection of Shawless Road and US 218, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving a recommendation award of bid to Trackman, Inc. of Stanford, Connecticut, in the amount of $49,495 for an indoor golf simulator for the Seer Valley Sportsplex.
Second.
Very good. My counsel, you have questions regarding two, three, or four?
Could I make just a point of information?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
On item four, the funding is provided from the gift from the estate of Carlton and Thelma Winter.
Very good. Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Cole. It's important. Any further comments? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Very good. Let's do five, six, seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing city clerk to certify approximately $154,500 against certain parcels for weed mowing, property junk cleanups, and sidewalk snow removals for the period May 2012 through March 2013. Six is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to Contract for Temporary Employment Services for Demolition Monitor dated October 11th, 2011, for temporary employment services to the city pertaining to demolition monitoring under the City of Waterloo's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Property Acquisition Project to increase the total actual expenses allowed by $2,264.20 for a revised contract limit and total actual expenses allowed by the agreement not to exceed $23,364.20, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Seven is a resolution approving construction plans for storm suver and paving, serving Sunnyside South addition as submitted by VJ Engineering of Cedar Falls.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding any of those three, five, six, or seven? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Motion's carry. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Getty.
Item number eight is a resolution approving memorandum of understanding with the city of Cedar Falls and Blackhawk County to seek FY 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, JAG, program funds in the amount of $74,263 to be used for funding the Tri-County Enforcement Task Force, and authorize director of safety services to execute the said document. Item number nine is a resolution approving the request for variance to the requirements of the subdivision order in section 2.3. Number one is a final plat submittal, section 5.1 primarily, primary plat requirements in section 5.2, final plat requirements for parcel F and G of the plat of survey generally located east of 1,000 Bishop Avenue. Item 10 is a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of survey of parcel F and G generally located east of 1,000 Bishop Avenue. I move that these be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Getty. A motion and second. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding eight, nine, or 10? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned to executive session.